And we will move on to consensus. Did I do that wrong? And, and we can, yeah. You were, Sarah asked me to pull 12.17, so then we also have to pull 12 point, okay. And we'll also pull 12.19 to discuss in further detail. Are we going to vote on that separate as well then? Or are we just going to discuss it and then vote on it? It's still going to get voted on the consensus motion, correct? So let's add that as another motion. We'll motion, we'll add that in. 12.19, we'll add that in as another motion, just in case depending on how the discussion goes. It's probably makes sense.
Okay.
Thanks for your input. All right. So we'll start off with consensus motion number one where we are running a point. Kelly DeMurray as our new intern board member. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a second. All in favor? Oppose? Carry.
I'm Kelly DeMurray. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a member of the Board of Education of the Soudas Central School District from the period of October 12th, 2023 through May 16th, 2023, according to the best of my ability.
Regina, should you end it in May 2020?
Oh, okay.
Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we can move on to our reports.
Simeon, Vice President of Student Council, here to present our results on homecoming. So we had a spirit weeks. Monday was colors, class colors. Tuesday was dual day. Dark dual day. This is our homecoming pep rally. It was really fun. Homecoming core and our teams. And our pep rally games. We're seniors lost in talk four. I think we should have won. It was unfair. I, I call it unfair. Do you want to figure it out? No, it's great, it's great. She's from seventh grade.
What, what games did you guys play during the pep rally?
Uh, we played talk four. We did the balloon pop. Well.
Balloon relay.
Balloon relay and.
Dizzy bath.
Dizzy bath. That was entertaining. We had the mascot do one of the rounds and he missed the goal completely. And then jousting.
You guys have talked about the dance?
Uh, and in the, in the evening, we have the pep rally. Well, no, the homecoming dance. We had a lot of people attending that. 250 kids attended it, so kids loved it. They loved the jousting. They love the music. A lot of people liked that they got to listen to the song they chose. So that was great. We had the photo booth, a DJ and a bonfire. Bonfire, I think it's way too hot. We definitely need to put less wood on them next year. I will say that. Eight thirty to ten, so everyone was super tired. After varsity soccer game and we had a good day for all.
What was your favorite part of homecoming? Guys can be shared.
So the students' favorite part of homecoming that we had as a consensus. I'm Ms. Lea. I'm the new social studies teacher for seventh and eighth grade. Just introduce myself. I'm also the co-adviser for student council with these awesome seniors and seventh graders. The favorite thing that they had was probably Western Day for Spirit Week on Wednesday. We had so many students dress up. And then on Friday, when we had the bonfire and the photo booth, the photo booth was the big hit. And hopefully we can get those photos and share with you in the future or even to put in the yearbook at the end of the year. What was your favorite piece of the year?
I ended up getting stuck as a mascot all day, so I was running from each game, volleyball, soccer. So that was entertaining to see all of our teams play. It was fun.
But this guy dressed up the most out of every, all the students at Soudas High School. We had celebrity day on Thursday and I loved his suit that he, it was like a three key suit.
James Bond. That's a good one. It's a celebrity.
And they were both on the homecoming court. Simeon won for the seniors and Aria was nominated for the seventh grade jesters. So you're standing in front of two of Soudas best.
I, I just loved it to dance. How you see a picture there of kids just standing, playing volleyball in a circle. We had kids playing soccer. We had kids dancing, jousting, hanging out by the fire in a safe distance, I make sure. With our firefighters. But it was just nice watching kids being kids and having fun and doing the things they love.
Yeah, I, I'd have to say that, you know, thank you, you know, all of you for, for making that week extra special. You know, putting, putting all the, all the students outside into the, into the stadium for a pep rally is, you know, it makes me a little bit nervous and I know that Dr. Peets was a little bit nervous because it's very instruction setting. And honestly, I couldn't be more proud of our kids. I mean, they were just outstanding and the activities that you had were fun. I think everybody enjoyed it. The night, the bonfire went extremely well. So thank you. You know, I think it was a, it was a great week and a lot of good spirit. I think I'm something really, really proud of. I really appreciate you all coming.
All right. Thank you. Jackie, will you do a i-ready?
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to kick us off this evening with our fall i-ready data. So in your slide deck, it might be slightly out of order. We decided afterwards, people suggested since I've experienced being up here in front of you guys, that I should kick us off. So. All right. So you're going to be seeing two different charts throughout the presentation. The first one is interpreting our beginning of the year i-ready data. So throughout, this is going to be showing if students are on track for grade level success. So it's almost making a prediction. When a student takes an i-ready diagnostic, it creates an individualized report for each student with their strengths and their weaknesses. And it also gives them a goal for each, for the year and then a stretch goal that if they choose to, if they can make it, they could make the potential of making a stretch goal could be five, 10, 15 points. But what i-ready thinks could be indicative to their future success over the course of the year. So some of that takes into account with this. And then we're also going to be looking at interpreting the five level view, which will have the dark green shaded, the regular green, yellow, the red, and then the red shaded as well. Okay, so at the beginning of the year, we're looking at our, the K three. Our UPK students do not take i-ready. So this is representing all the students in the building though, kindergarten through third grade. So whether they are in a special class or a gen ed class, every student takes i-ready in the diagnostic. So you can see that kindergarten looks glowing because at this point in time, they're all on track for grade level success because they've not taken this in the, in the past. So based on their, how they did, if they continue with solid tier one instruction using i-ready effectively, they are all on track right now for grade level success. So it always looks so glowing to see that hundred percent kindergarten, which is good because they all have that potential. So going into it, you'll see in our first graders with solid tier one instruction, the prediction is that eighty-eight percent of our students will make grade level success by the end of the year, which is something we truly hope for. It would be a great success to have eighty-eight percent of our students leaving first grade on grade level. You'll go, you'll see as you go down to second and third grade that there's sixty-one percent for second grade and forty-nine percent for third grade. And you'll notice that third grade is the first grade level that has some in red. So our students have already experienced at this point, they've done kindergarten, first, second, third grade. Or I'm sorry, as they're going into third grade. So what you're going to notice is that they have some of those gaps. And the purpose of i-ready is to fill in those gaps that they may have missed, whether it was a lack of instruction during the pandemic or there was a skill that they may have just not have really fully understood. I ready is really used to determine those gaps and backfill that so that the teacher can still continue on with their tier one instruction and the student is getting that backfill that they need to be successful with those foundational skills. All right. So when we go into reading at the five level view, this is where it breaks it down and you can see the differences for where students currently are and where they fall. So if anything in green, they're entering the year on or above grade level already. And yellow, they're at the previous year's grade level. And then red is two or more levels below. So that's when you get to your dark red shaded for the more than two years. And then you can also see the green shaded as well. So it teases out areas that students are excelling in. So you have to remember that there's different domains that students are tested in in i-ready. A phonemic awareness, high frequency words, their comprehension of literature, comprehension of nonfiction text. So there's different areas that they could be really high in and areas that they may struggle in, but it averages it out to come out with an individualized score for each student. And then that is averaged together to come up with these bar graphs. So with this, we're going to continue to use PEGRading and Benchmark Phonics to help with our student growth and provide strong tier one instruction to really get our scores up to where we want them to be. We know from the June data that our students had great growth last year. So we know that it's, we always know that the, the fall data may not look great, but there's many factors to consider, whether it was summer slide, whether it was new students. Because we are such a small demographic, adding in a handful of students to a grade level can really change our scores. So just keeping those things in mind as we're looking at this data. When we go into math at the beginning of the year, again, kindergarten is looking great because they're all new learners. They're all with tier one instruction, should make, should be on track for grade level success. When we look at first grade, you'll see that seventy-nine percent is on track for grade level, which is again, a great number. And then it does steadily go down, but that is again, where we're using our best practices. We're implementing the new Eureka Math Square, which will provide solid tier one instruction across the board for all students. And an important component of this is to remember is that this is data that we use when determining our, our plans and our courses of action when students are struggling. So if a student is going through the MTSS process and if they're receiving intervention, i-ready is one data point that we use. So this is really helping us tease out those areas where students may need some differentiation, some individualized instruction, whether they, we take them to the next level and go to a 504 and IEP. So this is just one component that we look at over the course of making sure our students are getting what they need. And then when we break down into the math five level view, we knew that in June, math was an area of need. When we looked at the June data, it was a struggle. I'm not going to sugarcoat that, but that is why we were taking the steps necessary to implement the new math program to make sure that our students were getting consistent tier one instruction across the board. And while implementation of a new program is always tricky, there's always bumps. There's always some slight, you know, there might be some slight issues that arise. It's what's best for our students. We need to make sure that we're having a solidified program, UPK through sixth grade, that's consistent, that they're hearing common language, that they're hearing the same processes being used and the curriculum is spiraling. So that's going to be huge impact over the course of the next couple of years to see where our data goes. And I'll be curious to see next year in the fall, what our data looks like after year one of implementation. Any questions about the elementary data?
Yeah, I think I asked a question about this last year, which of course is before we had you with us. But my impression about kindergarten with i-ready or at least on the graph, that it's, it's not showing us like what percentage of students are starting with like school readiness skills, like kind of have the basic knowledge that they have to succeed from the start. But do, do we have anything like yet that's telling us how we're starting this year or?
So what we have for our UPK kindergarten students, we use an assessment called the BRGANCE, which measures their reading, their early skills and whether they're school readiness. For our UPK grant, we do a progress monitoring and a benchmark. So we'll be end up doing the BRGANCE this year three times a year on our UPK students. And all of our kindergarten students, whether they were in our pre-K program or in Head Start or screen with it at the end of the year to ensure that we had that data to help start forming those groups because you're, you're right, i-ready is one data point. So we want to make sure we have a holistic picture of our students. And the BRGANCE is great because it includes fine motor, gross motor, math, reading skills on top of everything else that i-ready measures.
So like at some point, like is that, is that produced data that like we could see then and make sense of or?
It's something we can definitely look into and I could get back to you on that.
So like, for instance, if you have a student leaving UPK, say a four-year-old UPK program going into kindergarten, you know, what does that end of the year data show in terms of their, their readiness coming out of UPK? I think that's kind of what you're, is that correct down there?
It would be good to see some splits between, yeah, like our UPK program, like how they are in any school. There's ones that aren't. So overall picture and then yeah, those kinds of splits.
And it's just important to remember that because the BRGANCE measures it by their, how old they are. So it's what a three-year-old will rate, a four-year-old and a five-year-old. So that's just important to measure, like when you're comparing what's expected of a three-year-old is going to be different than a four-year-old and a five-year-old as the test continues. Any other questions? All right. Send it over to Megan.
All right. So on to the intermediate school. So as Jackie had already talked a little bit about, this beginning of year, three level comparison with i-ready, this is really a predictor. So this tells us, it takes into account the fact that if a student is in fourth grade, that the i-ready test is giving them material that is at a fourth grade level, where they're just, it's material that they have not learned yet. And so this is predicting if, given all of that solid tier one instruction, what percentage of our students are on track to be on grade level at the end of the grade level that they are currently in. And so for our fourth graders who were just third graders last year, sixty-six percent of them are currently on track for reading to be at or above grade level, with eleven percent approaching those expectations and then twenty-three percent are at risk with grades five and six. They both had the same percentage of grade. That forty-five percent of our fifth and sixth graders are on track to meet grade level expectations. And then when we look at the other fifty-five percent of those grade levels, that again, as Jackie had said, those yellow and red students are the ones that we're looking at when we are meeting weekly in MTSS, when we are taking a look at what kind of supports and interventions and instruction we need to put into place to support those individual students and what they need in order to succeed and to close that gap so that they are also approaching or in the grade by the end of the school year. Then when you look at our reading five level view, this is where it says that this is where the students are entering at that grade level or above. And so as Jackie was saying, we have the, the dark green or the slash green there. So we've got eighteen percent of our grade four students who, when they took the i-ready diagnostic, are on a fourth grade level. At the very beginning of fourth grade, fifth grade, we have nineteen percent of our students who entered at a fifth grade level already or above. And then for sixth grade, we have twenty-seven percent of our students who were entering right at the sixth grade level or above. And then if you take a look at the, the yellow in grade four, that means that they are still performing at a third grade level, which isn't completely unexpected as they were just coming in from third grade. They don't have the fourth grade material yet. You can see that our red is significantly larger in fifth and sixth grade. And so again, that is where we are really looking at those specific interventions and skills groupings for those students who are struggling as they're getting older to really close those gaps, which historically are going to be larger the older you're getting. And then if we take a look at our math, again, same idea. So we have sixty-five percent of our fourth graders are on track for success in fourth grade and to be on or above grade level by the end of the year. Fifth graders at sixty-one percent and then two awfully far behind our sixth graders at fifty-six percent. And again, we do have our new Eureka Math Square math program, which throughout the years, this is year one. So for our students, you know, they haven't come up with it from year to year to year as they will. So I am really optimistic that as the students are going through the program, the vocabulary is the same at each grade level, that it is spiraling on itself, that our students are going to be able to close many of those gaps. And then if we take a look at our five level view, again, these are the students who are entering at or above the grade level that they just arrived at. So we have thirteen percent of fourth graders who entering fourth grade are already on a fourth grade or above level. And then fifth grade has fifteen percent and sixth grade had twenty-four percent of their students who entered at or above grade level. Again, we are using all of our, we have our math interventionist. Every single teacher has two forty-minute intervention blocks built into their schedule where they are able to do a lot of that small group instruction that they're not, so once they have, the students are having that whole group, for example, math instruction, then they'll be able to go into smaller intervention groups that are tailored for exactly what they're struggling with or exactly what they need. And again, this is one data point. So when we are meeting together and making decisions about what is going to be best for students, i-ready is definitely one that we look at, but we also look at unit tests and quizzes in math. We take a look at their F and P scores and we have Benchmark Phonics that's coming up to my building as well. So there are many things that we're looking at to really get that big picture view of our students and what their individual needs are. Any questions about intermediate school data?
I just have a question since we're introducing the Eureka Math. Obviously, the teachers have to learn a new material also. So you, you expect to see immediate results of first year, even though the teachers are also learning it. You know what I mean? Everybody gets comfortable using a new program. So is it really realistic for us to see expectations the first year?
So for me, I believe because i-ready does break it down into different, you know, geometry and if I'm speaking just for math, the math vocabulary and algebra and things like that, I definitely think that there are areas where we're going to be able to see some of that, you know, immediate impact. And then I'm absolutely sure that there's going to be areas where it will take us, you know, a little bit more time to see growth. But I think that good math instruction is, really good instruction as a whole is good instruction. And so, you know, I would want my teachers to also make sure that they are focusing on those specific skills that those students need and they can find that out through their i-ready, through those different math quizzes and check-ins and exit tickets and things like that.
I, I think Jeff, you know, one of the, one of the pieces that, that we're committed to is, is implementing Eureka Math Square with fidelity. And, you know, there's a lot of research that went into choosing this program. I, I think what you're probably asking is, you, you may have heard some people talking about it. It was called an implementation dip. You know, try something new, sometimes right off the bat, you might not see immediate results. I'm sorry, I get right back to both of you. But, you know, it's, we really believe that by choosing this and with, with all of the work that's going into this, that we're really going to be able to see some, some remarkable results. You know, from year to year, you know, one of our big markers, I think, is, is the state test as well. And they do change the state test from year to year. You know, it's like this year, for instance, you know, we had some nice boosts across the board in mathematics results that we're, we're excited to show you in, in November. But next year, they could change the cut points and from year to year, it's so hard to say. It's measured year to year, what it's going to look like. You know, it, it's true that across the system, you know, there's, there's some people that are absolutely loving Eureka Math Square and they're digging in and they are just on fire with it. And some other folks are, are maybe having a little bit more difficulty with it. You know, maybe it's something new or maybe they've taught a specific way for so many years and it's hard for them to make the adjustment. So that's why supporting them and why having our math coaches at each building and all of that support there to help people through that, that's where we're going to be able to get to where we're, where we want to be. You know, you know, we've, we've spent a considerable amount of resources on this and, you know, we wouldn't have done it if we weren't, you know, believing that it was going to make a big difference for us. So we look forward to seeing how it goes.
Any other questions? All right.
Good evening, everybody. All right. So we're looking at our junior and senior high data. So at the beginning of the school year, when we look at students, they should be approaching grade level expectations. The bonus is that they're on track, right? So when a seventh grader comes in or an eighth grader comes in, we want them, we would love for them to be on track or above. But they're just coming in, they're learning seventh grade material, they're just starting to learn eighth grade material. So when we look at this data, for grade seven, forty-four percent of our students are on or approaching grade level expectations. And sixty-one percent of students in grade eight are on or approaching grade level expectations. And we have quite a large percentage in the red. And as I looked at last year's data, i-ready breaks it down by skills, right? So we're still seeing a consistent message where vocabulary acquisition and reading comprehension is the struggle. So we're looking at that and I will talk about next steps at the end, but that seems to be the predominant theme. And when I talk with teachers in the various disciplines, they're seeing the same things. they're seeing the same things. Students struggle with understanding the meaning of words and applying them in the reading, and then also the stamina to read lengthier passages, to write lengthier essays. If you're not a good reader, you're going to struggle in writing. There's the parallel there. So when we look at the five-level view, specifically in 7th grade, 11% are on or above grade level, 11% are early on grade level, 13% of our 7th graders are one grade level below, 9% of our students are two grade levels below, and 56% of our students are three or more grade levels below. In 8th grade, 10% are on or above grade level, 18% are early on grade level, 15% are one grade level below, 13% are two grade levels below, and 45% of our 8th graders are three or more grade levels below. When we look at math, a little bit more encouraging. In grade 7, 70% of our students are on or approaching grade level standards. And in grade 8, 71% are on or approaching grade level standards. And then looking at the specific skills that kids are struggling with, it's the algebra and algebraic thinking and the geometry is where they struggle the most. And when they go into 7th grade, that's when they really start digging in to those pre-algebra and algebra and geometry skills. In the five-level view, at grade 7, 7% are mid or above grade level, 17% are early on grade level, 30% are one grade level below, 16% are two grade levels below, and 30% are three or more grade levels below. In grade 8, 9% are mid or above grade level, 13% are early on grade level, 36% is one grade level below, 13% two grade levels below, and 30% are three or more grade levels below. So I'm going to talk specifically about the junior-senior high school first with regards to the work, and then Megan's going to talk about pre-K through 6. So at the junior-senior high school, we've changed things up since last year. I talked about how the English, 7th and 8th grade had 2 to 3, the grades were split up between 2 to 3 different teachers. So having one consistent teacher for each grade level is going to make a huge impact on student learning. There won't be any type of mismatch of curriculum process. So one person in charge of the curriculum, the standards, the assessments for reading and writing will be very important for student success. That continuity is very, very important. Math, we have one math teacher for 7th. We've always had one math teacher for 8th. Instructional coaching. So our instructional coach, Dr. Williams, has really worked with, and has really worked with our newer teachers and also our veteran teachers, and that has made all the difference in the data, especially our state data for 7th grade. Our students will continue to receive math and reading intervention. And what we're doing differently this year is that our reading specialist is pushing into our AIS classes. So our English teachers are not necessarily reading teachers. They're certified to be English literature. They teach English literature. They teach reading, they teach writing. They don't teach how to read. So we have a reading specialist pushing in with those AIS classes. We continue to have our AIS supports, our learning labs, and our special education students are with their special education teachers to provide that specially-designed instruction within the learning labs as prescribed by their IEPs. We also have our ENL teachers working in small groups with their students. Our teachers are working on incentives to get kids jazzed. When you're in 7th and 8th grade, IREDDI is not the most highlight of their day in doing those lessons. So our teachers are working on incentives. For an example, Mr. Barber has barber bucks. And for every completed lesson that they do, and they pass that lesson, they get a barber buck. And he has like a treasure trove of things that the students can buy with their barber bucks, and that has been a huge hit with the 7th graders. We have after-school support with all of our teachers, our 7th and 8th grade teachers, and our math intervention specialists working with kids who are struggling, whether it be the reading component. Because when you look at, and some of you are parents in my building, and you look at the math, it's a high level of reading to solve these problems and breaking it down. So some of our kiddos need that support, that small group support. We're working with them after school, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and in small groups. The teachers are dividing the students up amongst themselves to work in smaller groups. The weekly, in MTSS, we have weekly meetings talking about specific students who are struggling and what more can we provide to them to support them, and working with their families too, staying in connection with their families because we can't do this alone. We have to have that homeschool connection for success. I also meet with the entire team every month. I would love weekly, but I also don't want to take them away from their students because that after-school time is so precious. So we meet all together, the 7th and 8th grade English math teachers, special education teachers, ENL teachers, to say what's working well, what's not working well, and how can we game plan and better support our students. Any questions from me? Oh, yes. So this is, I'm so thrilled to have Mrs. Audrey Sowell with us. She is our new dean of students, and she's an administrative intern. So she'll be working very closely with myself and Carm, and she'll be spending the year with us.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. So far, it's been a great learning experience. It's been a great learning experience. Getting to know the kids and the family has been really good. So I'm excited to be at SOTUS and contribute what I can to the community.
Any other questions for me? Okay, so I'll leave this to her. So I'm going to talk about the work for both Jackie and my buildings because although we are two separate buildings, we both encompass elementary-age children. And so our work is very similar in both of the buildings. And so one thing, as Tina was talking about as well, is that we do weekly MTSS data meetings where we're looking at all sorts of data, including all of the academic data. And then we also do those quarterly as well with the grade-level teachers to especially see what type of supports and interventions students might need based on how they're doing. We also have dedicated math coaches in both of our buildings, and those coaches are meeting with grade-level teams in a variety of different ways. Some grade-level teams are meeting on a weekly basis, the entire team. And then some other grade-level teams have come to the point where they have different needs for their different classrooms. And so one of the coaches is going through some coaching cycles with individual teachers or groups of teachers based on exactly where they are and what their individual classes and students need for our math program. Again, we also have a math intervention teacher at both buildings, and we have our reading interventionists at both buildings as well. And they're really doing a lot of that higher-level, skills-based instruction for small groups of students who need that extra support. But in both of the buildings, worked in in different ways, is the ability for teachers to also do that small group intervention, whether it be guided reading, whether it be small group math, really guided math groups. Those are just some different ways that we work those things in. And then, of course, Jackie has talked extensively before about HIGRDI and Benchmark Phonics being some of our reading supports for our youngest learners. But we are actually bringing Benchmark Phonics up to the intermediate school as well so that we can continue doing some of that good work with our students who really are still struggling with those phonics skills and struggling to be fluent readers. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, it's more of a comment really. I know Jeff mentioned the potential dip with the implementation of a new program. But when I look at the, say, for example, the 7th and 8th grade numbers, I don't look at those and think those are indicative of how the 7th grade curriculum performs and the 8th grade performs. I think it's a cumulative result of the student's school career so far. And as you see each year progress, the reds and yellows get bigger and bigger. So I know there was a concern of, well, maybe the teachers have to learn something new. It might be slow to phase this in. But the changes, the work to be done, I'm optimistic for it. This is the third or fourth year I've seen the September numbers, and they're never where I would like them to be. I know we have the summer slide, but, I mean, realistically, the numbers are not great. And they haven't been great since I've been on the board. So I look forward to seeing these new changes implemented, and hopefully we can see the students actually improve.
Absolutely agree. Oh, absolutely, Cassandra. So Cassandra Lucellino, for those of you who don't know, she is our pre-K through 6th grade assistant principal. And so she splits her time between the elementary school and the intermediate school. So I'm surprised that she's not wearing sneakers every day because she probably gets the most steps in of anyone in the district. But she is working with, from our littlest littlest all the way up to our 6th graders who think that they're just ready to run the world. So we are just really thrilled to have her with us. She is an amazing support. And again, getting to know the students and the families and the teachers, and Cassandra is doing both student management pieces but also instructional pieces in both of the buildings.
I just wanted to say hello and thank you for having me. As Megan said, I'm in between both buildings, and it's really nice to see the growth that is happening in both buildings with all the new things that we're implementing. And just really getting to know the teachers, the students, and the community has been a lot of fun for me. And just being in the classrooms and being visible is probably my favorite part. So thanks.
Thank you all for that. So we will move on to public participation. And our first guest is Rob Chu. Welcome.
Thanks, good evening. Welcome to the board, Kelly. The remainder of my comments are addressed to the other board members. I found your discussion last month regarding the appointment to fill the open seat quite interesting. You admittedly were struggling with coming up with any names of someone who might be interested in serving. You are all well aware of my candidacy in '22. You should also be aware that I've attended nearly all the meetings over the past three years. I dare say that I've probably attended more board meetings than most of you. You knew I paid close attention to the business of the school board and am passionate about the education the kids receive here. You may also know that the number of votes I received in '22 was sufficient to win some of the elections of recent years. In other words, you knew there was a considerable support from my viewpoints within the community. No offense intended at all to Kelly, but I wonder how many board meetings she's attended over the past three years. I can think of three reasons you had trouble coming up with someone to appoint. One, you hadn't given any thought. Over at least 60 days, you knew there was a vacancy. Or, two, you were purposely trying to poke fun at me by feigning that you couldn't think of anyone interested in wanting to serve while I sat only a few yards from you. Or you operate as a group that only allows viewpoints you agree with, or perhaps some combination of the three. I don't want to believe number three, but the other two don't reflect well on you either. I informed two board members after last month's meeting indicating my willingness to serve. I did not receive a response from either of them. That is a reflection on these board members and how they operate. I find it telling of this board that you failed to mention my offer of serving in this meeting. It is also interesting that you took 120 days to fill this vacancy, and it appeared to happen only after I brought it up at the August meeting. The board policy manual indicates you have two options, appointment or a special election, and it outlines that a special election must happen within 90 days. Well, I would think that an appointment would happen much quicker than that, and yet it didn't. My understanding is that Laura's seat at this meeting has been unoccupied since March. That was the last time she was here. This board purports to back diversity, equity, and inclusion, but it seems to be applied only when it furthers your agenda. I would request that the meeting minutes, in the meeting minutes, it be mentioned that I offered to serve the board on September 14th, and that for whatever reason, this board kept it from the public's knowledge. Thank you.
Our next participation for tonight would be Caleb Chu. And we'll go through, since you're new, I'll go through what we typically have gone through, but Rob spoke quite often, so he's well aware. So speakers may use a public participation period to express their viewpoints to the board and only to the board. If you wish to address the board on a matter not listed on the agenda, the board is there is a right to hold comment until next scheduled meeting. Your presentation should be as brief as possible, but no more than four minutes. If you sign up for the first public forum but do not get the opportunity to speak during the first forum, which you are, you'll be moved to the side of the segment. All speakers must conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libious statements, threats, statements advocating racial religious or other forms of prejudice and shouting will not be tolerated. To protect the privacy of individual students, statements concerning personal and confidential student matters are prohibited. And during the public forum, the president and of the board will not reply to comments or questions expressed by members of the public. The president shall direct members of the public with specific personal complaints to the district's policy regarding public complaints. So the president shall rule a speaker out of order if a speaker exceeds the individual time allowance of four minutes, acts in an unsuppl manner, or uses inappropriate language. And the president, so discontinue a public forum when the last speaker signed up has completed the speaker's individual time allowance or the total period exceeds 30 minutes, whichever occurs first.
Good evening. For those who may not know me, my name is Caleb Chu. For the purposes of this public comment, I feel beneficial to review my relationship with this school. I'm a graduate of SOTUS, attending all of K through 12, finishing in the top 10 of my class in 2012. Academically, I received the honor of principal's list every marking period. And athletics, I held the position of team captain on every team I participated in and was unrivaled in MVP awards. I was repeatedly complimented for my work ethic and character by teachers and students alike. I then went on to a private university, graduating with a degree in mechanical engineering, since I've gone on to be a top performer in the field of manufacturing. All of these things are not said to gloat or bring about self-recognition. However, they are crucial in understanding the home I grew up in. If for some reason it could be thought that these accomplishments were mere luck, my sister, who also attended K through 12 at this school, has a similar resume. These successes are not to be attributed to the school we attended, but rather to the grace of God and the parents we were raised by. Our parents were intimately involved in our moral formation, which is the groundwork for education and good citizenry. It has come to my attention that in the last meeting there was a significant struggle in determining who could possibly be willing to serve on the board given the just-filled vacancy. This news staggered me as my father, Rob Chu, has been unselfishly attending and speaking at nearly every meeting over the past few years, and even ran for the board position unsuccessfully following a baseless, shameful hit piece published about him in the local newspaper. While I could fathom the possibility of the board not selecting him, it is disgusting that not one of you would even mention his name despite your absolute certainty of his willingness. What's more, he was sitting just a few feet in front of your very eyes during this discussion with a close friend waving his arms trying to get your attention. Anyone know who might be interested? Are you freaking kidding me? That is disgusting. Go interview my teachers, some of which are here, my coaches, members of our church, anyone who actually knows my father. You will get the same story, because he is an upright and principled man guided by our supreme heavenly Father. Your job is to guide, direct, and protect the students of the school. There are no legitimate reasons for ignoring his repeated written notifications indicating his willingness to serve. It is disgusting that you cowards will not even look at my father, let alone consider him as an honorable addition. It is time for your childlike behavior to end. Isaiah 10:1 says, "Woe to those enacting crooked statutes and writing oppressive laws." Thank you.
Okay. We will go on to consensus motion number two. Do I have a motion to approve? Jeff, you have a second?
Second.
Alden, you all favor? Oppose? Carry? And our consensus motion number three. We will pull up the 12.17, and we will talk about 12.19. Do we do that now? All right, let's do that before we do that consensus motion. All right, let's do consensus motion number three, and then we'll talk about that, and then we'll vote on them separately if you, okay, let's do that. Consensus motion number three, do you have a motion to approve? Jeff? Second? Brian? You all favor? Oppose? Carry? All right, let's do that. Let's do that now. Let's do the consensus motion number four for the vote on 12.17. Do you have a motion? Jeff? Second?
Second.
Alden? You all favor? Oppose? You staying? Carry? Okay, let's talk about 12.19.
So, I understand that there was some question about the addition of the elementary school student council advisor position. So, I've asked Ms. Mater, our elementary principal, to come forward and speak to that and the proposal.
Hello, everyone. So, this idea came to light this summer. We had our three-day MTSS meetings. And we are really trying to focus on how we can bring more student voice to the elementary school. Yes, we have the youngest learners in the district. However, they get to, they should be able to have a right to have their voice heard just as much as our intermediate, junior, senior high school students. So, we started batting around ideas of how we can make this happen. And a student council came about from that discussion. Some ideas that we had, we thought it would meet once a month from 3:30 to 5:00, because we have 21st Century that runs the program, making it till 5:00. So, we'd be able to line up with transportation that way, so that it would allow equity for all of our students to participate. We're looking at two representatives from each classroom in second and third grade that would have to do, like, fill out some sort of form, complete their interest in it, and then be nominated by their peers. So, we're bringing in the democratic process right there. And then, some ideas we came up with is that we really would like them to be a part of the building. So, whether that was to bring them to, we have our recruitment team meetings on the third Thursday of each month. So, whether we can align it so that we can get a couple of students each month to be there to help have their input on our building-level celebrations. We would love them to create a newsletter for families about our PBIS monthly activities and how that encompasses our character traits, updates from each grade level, pictures, events. We bat around this staff member spotlight section. We also want them, we want to bring in more building-level initiatives, I'm sorry, building-level incentives, where the kids are working collectively as a whole to work towards a goal as a building. So, we talked about having our Spartan dollars counted up when the kids do their Spartan prime, and having them be a part of that, so that they are actually the ones like counting the dollars up, making sure that they're the ones tracking it. And then, we really want them to start meeting and participating in our monthly assemblies. So, with this, we thought having two staff members there to support this organization, because at the meetings, they would start together. And then, they kind of, we were discussing breaking up into small, like, breakout groups to work on different activities. One group might be working on the newsletter. One group might be working on counting the Spartan bucks and filling in our thermometer, reaching our building goal. So, there were just some different ideas. It's definitely where we want the kids' voice. This was all of our adult voice at this point. But we wanted to bring this up for potential addition to the building and just really give our students a chance to be a part of the building and really have their voices heard. Any questions?
I was the one who brought up the discussion, because I was trying to get an understanding of what it was that you're trying to accomplish. So, the timing, obviously, is what I was wondering about, because elementary school kids don't stay after school like they do in the intermediate. So, I was trying to figure out when you were going to be able to do that. I didn't want kids to be pulled from classes or anything else to lose our learning. I guess my other question, now that you mentioned what it was, how are you going to get the kids into school here from 3:30 to 5:00?
So, they're going to just stay after after school. So, technically, it'd be 3:15, as soon as the dismissal was over, they would just stay through 3:15 to 5:00. And then, because 21st Century is running Monday through Thursday, we're just going to line it up with one of the days, so that the kiddos that parents didn't have a way to get them could be taken home on the 21st Century bus. So, we'd be able to have, whether they could have transportation or not, everyone would essentially have transportation.
Okay.
So, we would have that equitable situation, no matter what our family circumstances was.
And I guess my other question was, what was it that you expected the students to accomplish? You know, I've had three second third graders, and they would just want ice cream. That's what they're going to vote for every month, every time you meet, can we have ice cream? So, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, what is it that you're trying to accomplish in bringing them in to do this program?
We're creating future leaders.
Okay.
We want them, they're the foundation of what this building and this district's going to be in the next couple of years. So, if we can really get them focused on leadership skills and promoting those skills, because there's so many positive attributes and qualities they need as productive members of society, that we can begin teaching at the second and third grade level through student council experience. Any other questions?
Just another piece, just from the financial aspect. We've abolished one club that we haven't been able to do for a few years. There hasn't been any interest. And then, there's also a couple other clubs that are no longer operating. So, just from a financial perspective, by abolishing the one club and by not filling some of the other ones, it doesn't impact our budget at all. You know, so we've got the money budget, and so there's no financial impact. And what we did was, we tried to model it after the stipends in the intermediate school, so that there was equity across the district. And then, the other piece is, as Jackie had said, that we don't ever want, because the elementary school, their schedule, in order for them to do activities like this, they have to do it after school. So, we don't want to leave anyone out. So, that's why partnering with 21st Century to provide that transportation home for those who read it, and then those who want to be picked up can. That way, everyone gets an opportunity if they so choose. We're doing something in the elementary school now with the third grade choir, something brand new we've started this year. And, you know, and it's just giving kids opportunities in the elementary school that they've never, ever had before, which is pretty exciting.
In addition to the choir, they're actually doing, through 21st Century, Emma Voss is also doing a drama club. And then, they've got a STEM program that Jess Brown is running. And then, Melissa Blankenberg is also doing a newspaper. So, there's quite a few clubs now that have been embedded within 21st Century for our second and third graders. And that's why the program is now four days a week versus three days a week. So, we're adding on student council as another potential opportunity for our students to get involved with their school, community, and family. Any other questions? Thank you.
Can we go consensus motion five, which would be 12.19? We removed that for the purpose, so that it wasn't paired up with everything else. Sarah wound up staying, yeah. Yeah, but she didn't want to stay from the whole rest of that. All right, so consensus motion five then for 12.19. Do you have a motion to approve 12.19?
Motion. Second.
Alden, motion is a second? All right. Public participation. Jennifer Williams. Welcome.
I'm also going to comment about the appointment process. Not going to talk about to the characters per se. Rob and Caleb handled that pretty well, I think. But my main concern is, you know, I'm the chapter chair for Moms for Liberty, and we do Wayne County. And we do truly advocate for community involvement in our school boards, in our schools. I often tell parents, the first interaction you have with your teachers should not be a negative one. You should know who your teachers are, your counselors, your principals, your school board members, and your superintendents. So, we are advocating on the parent's side to get more people involved and doing, being involved in education, because we know, still true today, the number one driver in student success is parental involvement. On the other side of that, I would hope that, and I have to say, I am glad to see that you have such an open public comment. I don't know if you're aware, probably are. A lot of districts along, around this area and across the state have really shut things down, because it's perceived as they don't want to hear diversity. The fact that you have two sessions open, and they're four minutes, and you seem to be open to that, and like you can come in and sign up the day of, like, in the moment, is, I don't think you understand how tremendous that truly is. So, please keep that as long as you feel led. But as far as the appointment process, one way I would hope that in the future, I know the law does not dictate how the appointment process happens. You can either do a special election or appointment process. One school district, Paul Mac, last year had to, had a vacancy, and they actually put out a process of applicants. They accepted packages of people interested within their community who would be interested in filling the vacancy. I know you guys were questioning if you could find someone interested. Perhaps, maybe in the future, you could implement, you know, if, for whatever reason, a vacancy becomes open, that you would have an application process. Put it out to the community that you do have a vacancy. Require an application, resume, whatever, fill it in. But put it to the public, your community, that there is a vacancy and that you would be interested in who would be serving. Obviously, we know Rob would have done such an application. Kelly may have as well. And then, from that point, you would have applications, and you could determine from those who you would, because again, it is your decision, your vote. But the transparency that that gives your community shows that you are interested in their input. And it's just one more way to be open to your community and allow their input in the process. So, thank you for that.
So, the board themselves voted on the application on those?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and it was Paul Mac, so I'm sure you could, and they'll tell you the details.
Consensus motion number six. Do you have a motion to approve? Second? You all favor? Oppose? Carry? And with that, can we set the agenda for next meeting?
So, for the next agenda, we will have our K through six F and P reading results. And then, also, we have our grade three through eight math, the LA, and science data back. And just recently, that data was embargoed. So, we'll be presenting our results of that next meeting. And we'll also be sharing how we compared in Wayne County and the region as well, so you have an idea about how we did comparable. So, that's what we'll be doing in the morning.
Do you have a motion to approve consensus motion number seven? We were going to an anticipated executive session to discuss the position of a particular person. Do you have a motion to approve? Second? Jeff, second? You all favor? Oppose? Carry? Perfect. Thank you, guys.